Okay, six thirty, I call the meeting to order. Executive session, seems that we don't have a full board, we will, I'd like someone to make a motion to amend the agenda.
Make a motion to amend the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Recording in progress.
Do we need to amend the agenda any further?
I wouldn't in case the school shows up, but we don't have the superintendent here yet, so I'm assuming they're coming.
When you get to those, you can table them.
Can I get an motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Select board minutes of October second, anybody have anything on them?
Do not.
You good with them, Dan?
Yep.
Uh, liquor board minutes of October second. Okay, town managers report.
Okay, just a couple of things I'm gonna tell you that's not on my report. Um, you do have the police crime stats or statistics for the month in your packet. Um, Ann has printed out current budget status that was sitting on the table today that shows where we're at along with the, um, the funds, the fund sheet too with our restricted funds, so that's be good for us, for you guys before we start into budget season. And the other thing, the, two other things, you did see your invites to the, um, fireman's banquet in front of you. And Alicia wanted me to bring this one up, she went to a school board, or school meeting last night. And Ann had given this to me too, there was discussion on this Valley Community Center. That, um, that's five community members who want to build this community center, I'm, were you there last night, Steven? No?
Uh, I, I, I know what that is.
Okay, um, it looks like they want to do it off land that Otter Valley owns. It's, you know, of the tune of twelve million dollars. And they want to, let's see if I can show this. Um, it's just, you know, building for indoor, but, um, I, I'm assuming they're going to be coming to towns at some point because in their action page, they want to... Where the heck is it? They want to... Each town receive a draft memo and they want to try to vote for a bond to float this project. So, I, and you can pass it around, I, it's, you know, I'm, Alicia and I didn't talk much about it last night, but there were lots of questions about it even at the school district level, so I'm sure we'll hear more about it, but just want to make you aware of it.
Who's proposing it, who's Valley?
It's, well, it just says, "Five community members partnered with Otter Valley to begin research and development."
So what?
It's Tanner, Tanner Romano, Tanner Romano, Travis Romano, DJ Pete, Lya Dick, and Mike Rowe.
So.
Dig into their pockets.
Yeah, that's gonna be a tough one with the current financial, that's all I know about it, but.
Are they taking it to other towns to?
Well, I think if they're gonna float a bond, they're gonna have to, because you guys are gonna have to approve that if it goes to a bond vote, so. But, and we'd be collecting the money.
Which towns are involved? All the Otter Valley School District?
Well, I think it's...
Sounds like it.
Probably.
That's what I would assume.
Uh, well, I think it would be open to almost anybody at that point.
Well, what is, what exactly is the thing supposed to be?
A big recreation community center like what Middlebury would have, I would assume, that seems to be like what it would be. I mean, it shows like a gymnasium and then like a weight room, uh, multipurpose, team rooms, um, pickleball courts. Yep. Twelve million dollars.
Hey, Dave.
Yep, so, um, yeah. But I, I can certainly send you guys this, or I'm sure more will come if, just to be aware of it, I'll keep you posted, I mean, this was like from Alicia last night at seven thirty, so.
They haven't mentioned grants?
Haven't heard a word, that's all I, that's the first I've kinda, but, um, well, I'll keep, I'll keep my...
Twelve million dollars.
Keep my ears open for that one.
With grants available, may not turn out to be that bad.
It would be nice if we could do something indoors at our rec facility.
That too.
Um, actually, Liz has, Liz has got a couple, there's some grant opportunities that come out like the rec facilities ones all the time. And, you know, they have those first kind of like introductory meetings and stuff, I know she's got two of them that she's gonna attend just to see what, what's out there, so, but, you know. Anyway, um, and then my rest on my report. Um, our auditors have begun our audit for twenty twenty-three, um, we met with them on October seventh via Zoom uh, to discuss any financial concerns and changes that were made since the last audit. And the auditor will be on site, actually, I said this week, it's actually next Monday. Um, we did discuss timeline importance of having the audit in hand before the annual town meeting in March, so they took, they've hired up, almost doubled their staff, because they got overwhelmed with new accounts last year, so they're...
Yeah, last year was good.
Yeah, but, um, we didn't, Helen and, Helen and Ann and Pat and I met with them, and, I mean, we didn't, I don't think we saw any concerns, we've met all the requirements that were in the management letter of, you know, this past year, so I think we're looking pretty good. We will find out when the, when the management letter comes out. Um, attended a municipal roundtable hosted by the Vermont Cannabis Control Board to discuss new legislation on outdoor cannabis cultivation. Um, the board was looking for input from municipalities on what they would like to see for local regulations, so there was a lot of input, a lot of concern on, um, odor mostly. So this is that new cannabis control board that was just, it's like newly created. Um, I'm assuming they're gonna have more roundtables on this to create what, and then what, like what role local zoning would have in it. Um, because I know we don't really have any with indoor and sales, you know, we have to treat it like a regular business with, so we can't, we can't like make zoning regulations specific for the sale of marijuana products, it would have to conform with our local zoning. So, I think they're looking at this one a little differently because of the odor problem, so.
Yeah, they do.
The more, again, the more this progresses, I will keep you folks aware. Um, attended the regional, Rattlin Regional Planning Commission Quarterly Town Manager Meeting on October tenth, discussion was uh, the regional town plan again, so they're really pushing that one out. I did bring up a couple of things, and actually the Poltony Town Manager felt the same way with, you know, this, all this infill that the state is trying to, you know, push on towns that, our town doesn't have, doesn't have any spot for infill, then we really need to focus on our growth areas. So, which are north and south on seven. And, and Poltony was the same way, they're just, they're too tight, so, um, hopefully, we can, you know, get some input on that and be like, if we, if we want growth, this is where we want to do it. Um, which another thing down here as part of that, Silaway Networks will be here, um, on the twenty-ninth to make changes to our computer system based on, you know, Dean's proposals and stuff, so we're excited for that to get, get back up to speed on that. Uh, the culvert replacement on Whipple Hollow Road has been completed, and RA Filscov did an outstanding job, and we really hope we can work with them again in the future. Um, Chad's parents even brought him cookies, so, but they, they were done a day early, they were just super courteous and real easy to work with and meticulous, which was great, so I really hope we can work with them again. Um, sidewalk and Whipple Hollow paving is tentatively scheduled for next week, we'll be paving the sidewalk from Elm Street to the north side of Depot Hill. And, uh, two thousand six hundred and forty foot section from, of Whipple Hollow starting just south of Omia. And we also, we've been helping the library out a little bit to prep their top parking lot, probably saw us out there today. Um, they're wanting to get that paved, so, which we're, we're okay with because we plow it and it's, it was pretty beat up, so. Um, if they see us out there, that's what we're doing, helping them out with that. Um, and Sean and I today met with Jason of Otter Creek Engineering to review the first draft plans to extend the municipal sewer from Plains Road to the intersection Route seven in Kendall Hill. We're hoping to get this project shovel ready for future funding, so this is another thing about our, you know, our future growth areas, if we have that infrastructure. And we, we've talked about this since I've been here, so, um, this is one step closer, and the more we can get ready for opportunities for funding, that's where we're at. And I, actually, when I was at, Ann and I went to something up in Randolph a couple of months ago. And one of my contacts at DEC was like, give me a call if you've got plans ready for this so we can talk, so, um, hopefully, something comes out of that. Um, then just the Bridge one oh eight, uh, update, um, not really much to really talk about, they're doing concrete pours on the sub footings and they're backfilling the north side. I took Alicia down there actually two weeks ago, we went on the, on the walkway, because they have three excavators in the hole down there hammering that concrete out, there's so much old concrete in there, but it's a pretty big job. Um, so, I know they're, they're a little behind, but they weren't expecting that much demolition down there, so there's a lot of concrete down there. All those piers go just like this. So, um, yeah, but she wanted to check it out, so we did a little field trip. And that's all I have for this evening.
Any questions for Dave? Select board remarks? Nothing?
I have nothing.
Public comment?
Who is in charge, the authority of the underpass on Whipple Hollow that goes under the train? Is that theirs?
Actually, that's Omia's spur. The one right at the intersection there, so that might be, you guys might know by already, you've been here longer. That's the spur that comes off the main line that goes...
Yeah.
That might be Omia's, talking about the graffiti on it?
Yeah. I was gonna see if we could paint it or clean it or something, but we wanted to talk to whoever before we go and do it.
Definitely not do it without asking permission.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I'll check with, I'll check with V Trans and Vermont Rail, because they're, depending on which line it is, who's got the authority over it, so.
Oh, at the same time, you're really gonna yell at me for getting rid of graffiti? You, you'd be about yay big if you got, if somebody yelled at me for...
If you do it, it's not my problem, so.
No, I know, but I'm saying, like, you know, it, what the hell?
I wouldn't look at it.
Yeah.
We just go under it all the time, you know, and I mean, it wasn't bad, but it's gotten to a point where it's like, come on.
There's a bunch more.
Yeah. Yeah.
Let me see what I can do with that.
All right.
I'll put some calls out.
I mean, we, we don't mind doing it, you know, we just need the okay.
Well, it'd be nice if they could do it and actually put that stuff, they put on a lot of the bridges now that if they...
To keep it from getting painted again?
It comes off easier, so.
I didn't know they had that.
Oh, yeah. You know who actually came up with that?
Graffiti away.
New York City MTA.
I bet.
To combat the graffiti on the subways.
Yep. Yep.
But we worked diligently to find what works to combat that coating.
The, uh, the one thing is if they're doing it on that, they aren't doing it on our covered bridge.
Right.
That's true.
Right.
There is that golden silver lining, I guess.
Yep.
Okay, any other public comments?
Actually, there is a tag.
Yeah, they...
Somebody tagged up on one of the bridges.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
We can fix that.
Paint.
Yep. Yep.
We should fix that, yep.
Uh, no old business, uh, new business, uh, Superintendent Sanchez isn't here. Uh, nobody here for their digital request. Tri-Town TAP Grant Public Meeting, ten twenty-three, twenty-four.
So, we have, um, an alternatives meeting for the tri-town, uh, scoping study for the, you know, the, the trail. Um, this is sort of a, just a preview of what is going to be in that meeting, like the last one, we were still gonna do it the same way with the three towns doing it remotely, so we have, you know, I'll be here and, but, one, we had one attendant, one attendee other than me. Um, but, uh, I was really impressed with StanTech and how they've been doing this and the, like, the data they've been gathering and just the way they've been really going about it with the towns, it's nice to, really, I've never worked with them before. But, um, this, this shows you some of the alternatives, well, the three alternatives, actually, there's four because the state requires that we have a do-nothing approach too when we do these TAP grants, so there's that, and then there's three different scenarios. I know that, uh, Stephanie at Regional Planning was going to reach out to Omia to see what they think of all this too, that hopefully we can get some kind of partnership with them because they're pretty big landowners between here and West Rattlin, but, um, a lot of it is some trails that are already existing, some might be road like Gorham Bridge or Elm Street because it's there. But, um, it's moving forward, I, it's, it's actually been a really fun project to work on, so. Um, but I just have that for you guys to look at, you're more than welcome to come hang out with me next Thursday if you want. Um, and, uh, yeah, so that's really it with that, but that's, that's been a fun project, so hopefully, hopefully something comes out of it.
Twenty-third is next Wednesday.
Oh, next Wednesday, sorry, it is next Wednesday.
Lot more homeless people coming to Pittsburgh.
I've got another meeting next.
Okay, uh, Syndicate Road Discussion, and I will turn this over to the honorable Mr. Winslow.
Honorable.
Okay, Dave Phyllisson?
So, I think this is a little premature with what this is, but I, I received a phone call from the Brandon Town Manager on September thirtieth. Um, requesting to see if, um, the town has any concerns about reclassifying the section of Lower Carver Street, which we all know is Syndicate Road, so once it crosses the, well, Brandon owns the bridge. So once it's there, it's, you know, it's lower Carver. Um, they've been having issues with trash out there forever. Um, so this is all I have, from what I've gathered, this hasn't even gone to the Brandon Select Board yet, because I reached out to a board member and that's the first I heard about it was from me. But, um, just throwing that out there, I mean, I have a couple of concerns about it, just, you know, roads and stuff, that it is a road that goes between two towns and that's kind of important.
Want to reclassify it?
They want to actually gate it. And I, I, that's not my place to say anything, but I don't think you can legally do that, and I'm gonna leave it there. Um, yeah, well, and I know that first responders, first responders frowned on that too, I, there was, you know, I grew up in Bristol and Bristol Pond, someone did that once and the fire departments ended up going through the rails, the gates to get to where they needed to go. And then someone tried to sue them for damaging property, it was a big deal back then.
So that's what they're proposing?
So that's what they're proposing, um, yeah, so, um...
So Bill, Bill called you, Dave?
Uh, it wasn't Bill, it was Seth. So I asked, I asked for it to be in writing so that we had something on it, but, um, just throwing that out there, like, I think, you know, they're, they're, in order to do it properly, they have to do public hearings anyway, that's per statute. But I know there is, from doing some of these things and now sitting on the transportation board, like, roads that go between two towns are, that's a, that's a big deal to close a road that connects two towns, so, or declassify it. Yeah, so anyway, that's what it is.
It's just giving us a heads up?
We'll just pay attention, and yeah, I mean, if there's a, if there's a hearing, you know, um...
Did they talk about the condition of that bridge, is that, that part of the problem?
Well, no, the problem is this, so they, if, this is from what I'm hearing, and maybe the Brandon reporter will know more than I do, but, um, good thing you're here tonight, Steven. Um, there was an issue with a lot of trash that I think got thrown in the creek, and the state required that the town cleaned it up, and they weren't happy about paying for it. Does that sound right? Have you heard about that?
That sounds...
Okay, I mean, it's been a problem forever, you know, it's always, but, it was, you know, it's one of those roads that's just, so, um, but anyway. Um, that's just for future stuff, I guess, and we'll see what happens.
So purely a heads up?
Purely a heads up.
No action needed. Okay, we will move on.
Mr. Mills?
To the Otter Creek Watershed Insect Control District Discussion.
I'm really not trying to pick on Brandon tonight, this one really frustrated me. Remember at the last meeting, Alicia stepped down from the mosquito district and I took the role. I went to their meeting, well, I zoomed into their meeting last week that was two hours and forty-five minutes long.
Wow.
And I actually emailed Steven Belcher the next day and said, you have to be the most patient human being I've ever met. The meeting was taken over by one of the Brandon reps who just was repetitive in questions, and my concern is that this is really, it's not accomplishing anything. And a couple of years back, we had an issue with the same individual, and actually ended up with town managers and state reps and, you know, meeting to discuss because the state was ready to pull funding for Larvicide. Based on the actions that this individual had, talking to them, it was, it was pretty bad. And so we determined at that time that that person should not be on the board anymore. And that person just got reappointed to the board again. So I don't know what can be done. But I think my, my rec, my suggestion would be that I think we need to write a letter of concern and saying, you know, this is, this is not okay that we have three hour meetings and nothing gets done and, you know, and...
What's this person's position?
He's just a board member on the mosquito district.
How were you appointed, the select board reappointed somebody? I mean, I know, I know all about this, but they reappointed him back on?
He's back on.
After all the issues they had?
Yep.
Okay.
And it was clear Wednesday night that, um, those issues are still arising, I'm just one instance, like, they get roughly seventy thousand dollars every year to do Larvicide from the state, so the, the grant that the money I, I learned all this from the first time this happened. So that, the funding that the state gives, the department act gives them is specific, is for Larvicide only, it's not for adulticide, that's what we all pay for. Um, and so it shows up as a reimbursable grant, so if you spend sixty-five thousand dollars of that, that year, you don't get a check for five thousand dollars at the end of the year, it's reimbursable, however, the state has been really cool with them saying, we'll let you roll this a little bit over, you know, because they're like, we've already earmarked it for this, it's not...
Right.
But it's part of your revenue, and when you create a budget, you know that that money's coming in every year, you need to show that revenue to offset your expense. And the whole big thing has been that this individual does not want that revenue, the grant revenue, to be part of the budget. And, which would really screw up our, the fees that we would pay, because it would show as, you know, if the expenses weren't being offset by seventy thousand dollar revenue, we, all the municipalities would in turn pay more, you know, based on what the cost is, so. This was kind of what took the meeting over again, and this is what it was years ago too, um...
So do you feel it's, you just want to write a letter to the Brandon Town Manager?
I think so, to the Brandon Select Board, I think.
Select Board?
Yep. I, I mean, do you feel, do you think that's overstepping, or do, I think that they need to be made aware?
No, you can't go down the same road.
No, it's not good.
But I think you should say you have a, you have a concern as our rep, yeah, I think that's fine to do.
Um, I'd be more than happy to draft the letter, bring it to the next meeting.
That's fine.
And if you guys have any input on it, please don't hesitate to give me a shout, but I felt bad for Steven, I know he's been hanging in there. And, you know, he just, he is such a patient human being and, um, God bless him, actually, for, I don't know, I just... It was, it was terrible, it was, yeah, it was terrible, actually, yeah, because my, it's funny, my wife went to bed at nine thirty and she looked downstairs, she's like, are you still on that meeting? I'm like, yep.
Somebody needs to shut them off.
Yep, so anyway.
Well, not...
We have to get...
Who's the chair?
Yeah, I mean, is Steven?
Steven just became chair, because the other ones, like, resigned, yeah, yeah, the rest of them.
Steve needs to take all the meetings, say, well, you've...
Yep.
We're done.
Yeah, I think that's...
I have a question.
Yes.
What's his agenda? I still don't quite understand.
No idea. I don't know. I know there's, there's been through the years, there's been a lot of hostility between different town reps and, you know, like the whole thing with Salisbury a few years ago where they didn't want to pay for adulticide, and that turned into a big thing, and that really, that kind of turned the, the burner up pretty hot with a couple of other people, so. Um, yeah. I don't know, I, you know, it's, it's not a big budget, you know, it's a public service they do for us, and, um, but I just don't think people need to be subjected to three, and actually, Steven finally said, I'm adjourning this meeting, we're done. But it was, yeah, I felt bad for him.
But if they don't include the grant funding, that's an Otter Creek payday.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, that's just not the way it's done.
Yeah, so, anyway, all right, I will draft a letter.
Okay, uh, um... Snowmaz. Road use permission.
There's no change to that.
So, in your packet, it's the one they gave us last year, I believe.
The same one.
Yep, yep, yep.
Make a motion.
You guys make a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on this? You good with it, Dan?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Okay.
Oh.
Those three-month calendar while I'm doing this.
Schedule for fiscal year twenty-six budget.
So, um, we are at that time of the year. Um, Ann and I have, well, mostly Ann, has been meeting with department heads to start getting numbers for, you know, for departments, and we're going into it, trying to keep it pretty small because of just the, the way things are going in the world right now. So I did talk with Tom and Alicia about this too, I, I'd like if we could schedule a meeting or two outside of a select board meeting, more like a budget workshop, just so we can kind of really get into it and not have to worry about running the meeting as well.
Well.
Um, and I did talk to Mark today, we're hoping to do something next Wednesday, but he's not available. We don't have a meeting, obviously, on the thirtieth, because we have five Wednesdays this month, are you guys available to maybe start this workshop on the thirtieth?
That's good for me.
Okay, and then, and well, because we'll have to warn these all.
We gotta warn them.
Yeah, and then, so November, our select board meeting's on the sixth, I mean, do you want, we could certainly do like agenda item, and then maybe, maybe the thirteenth we could meet, no?
It's right in the middle of deer season.
No, it's not. Oh, right, so we'd have to wait.
Start till the sixth.
Oh, it isn't?
No.
I got my wrong date.
It's late this year.
It's late, wicked late this year.
I wrote on the wrong week.
All right, yeah, it's like a week late, isn't it?
I got a whole extra week there?
Got a whole extra week.
Plenty of time for budget, Mark.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, so the thirteenth?
Doesn't seem to be the sixth.
Do you, do you guys feel like, I mean, we went through it pretty quick last year, but, um, do you think that's enough for workshops and the rest of it we do in the board meetings, or do you want to do, you want to see how it goes?
Let's see how they go.
I mean, that gives us two meetings.
So...
Time? And how long?
What time do you guys want to meet? I mean, I'm, if you can meet earlier, I'm fine with meeting earlier, I don't care.
I can meet earlier.
Well, last time we did it, we were five to six P M, that's what was located.
Five o'clock would be fine, we're here, so.
Yeah.
That work for you, Dave?
If I really get here, yeah, should be able to.
Right, five P M?
I'm gonna put it in.
Okay.
So, give me those dates again, Dave.
The thirtieth of October.
October thirtieth.
And the thirteenth of November. So I will try to get some proposal out to you before that, it might just be department-wise only, but only because we haven't gotten everything yet. Um, I know we're gonna have to have a lengthy conversation on health insurance because of the rate increases, so, um, that's gonna be one we might spend a little bit of time on.
Okay.
Other than that, I can't really think of anything else huge, but, um...
Well, let's try to keep it...
So, but as, as soon as we can get stuff together, I'll try to get something, at least email that to you guys just to look over and prepare, but, um, other than that, cool.
Do you need me to cover those, is there a warned meeting?
Um, let's...
I did two years ago.
Well, it wouldn't hurt, but we can also just turn the Zoom on too, so.
No, I can do it.
Okay. Okay, I mean, I guess with new open meeting law, it might not be a bad idea to have it. Yeah, it might not be a bad idea to have it.
Um, thirtieth and thirteenth.
Yep. Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, uh, orders and payroll, anybody have any questions on the orders?
Let's look at the new one. Nothing else.
Not very much exciting on this one.
No. Almost up.
Yep, pass them around, I guess, if you guys have any comments. Was a whole lot of stuff that was questionable.
Joe was having trouble finding something on that one.
Yeah.
At, okay.
At least by one.
Okay.
The rarity of the world.
Well, yeah.
So...
Well, usually somebody else had found it before he spoke up.
We were down at wastewater today before we met with Otter Creek Engineering, and Sean's starting to get some of those new meters in. Those are pretty cool, they, so that, you know, they, those are the ones that we can read.
Remotes, right?
And nothing's hanging outside of houses anymore. Um, but he was showing me what the, what the app does for it, so you can, you can go in and look at dailies for usage on houses, so if you see really high flow and it's, looks out, and, you know, it's all graphed out. Um, it shows, it tells you the temperature of the water, the temperature of the room that the water, that the water lines in, so if someone's basement starts to freeze up because they're down in Florida, well, no, you know.
Does it give you alert on something?
It does, yeah, we can set them up for alerts. Um, pretty cool system, the, and so he's, actually, it's, it's Android-based, so I let him borrow my Surface. And they're gonna put one up at Omia to see if it'll read it up there, because that's the hardest place to read, you know.
Yeah.
But, um, we'll probably get him, we'll, we'll get him a Surface and make sure it's got a hotspot in it, so he can do it, but, um, it's pretty cool, we've got, we put one in down at wastewater, Sean and Tyler put them in their houses so we could check them.
Yep.
Um, but it's kind of nice, nothing's hanging outside of the houses anymore, and, um...
That's nice.
Yeah, so, I was, I should have brought one up today, just so you guys tonight, so you guys could see it, because it's a pretty cool system. So...
So they did put one at Omia, or they're going?
I think he's going to put one in up there. But that's one where he says, you know, like, when Omia calls water, because they reclaim a lot of water up there. Um, you know, the master meter just called. Um, you know, the master meter just goes, you know, it drops pretty quick for usage, so. Sounds like when it does that, I'll know where it's, you know, who's doing it, which is nice, so.
How much pricier are they than the regular meters?
Don't know. Not, well, everything's, everything's, I mean, and to replace anything, and we're at that point where we're.
I understand.
I could, I'll give you the prices. I know we went through them once, but they weren't, they weren't, yeah, and there's no like monthly fee with these, you know, that's where they get you with like the apps and everything in the programs.
Oh, yeah.
So, and then we're looking at this other system to do our, our GIS stuff for like culverts and water and sewer that's, no, it's, you, you pay uh, it's like forty bucks a month, but the one we're paying right now is like four grand a year, I think. And it's not that good, so we're gonna switch that over hopefully too and, and then Chad, and the guys will be able to incorporate. They'll be able to layer our culverts and bridges and everything onto the water and sewer too, which will be nice, so they'll go out with that and all that data will be right there. It's pretty cool. Yeah.
Again, a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, yes.
I assume everybody's all in favor?
Aye.